Okay, call the order of this meeting of the Pickle City Board of Education meeting for February 27th, 2020. And Mr. Hiddle, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mrs. Mcmackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here. Please join in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. It's going to be quite a crowd tonight, so looking forward to it. So what we need is approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2020 board meeting. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so moved. If you agree, please say so by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed? All right. Now approval of the agenda for tonight. May I have a motion? Has everybody seen it? They can look at any questions or anything? Okay. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, and please say aye if you approve.
Aye.
Approve, okay. And nobody against, so we'll move on. Okay, board reports. Upper Valley.
Lots of neat things are happening. They had the open house for the sophomores a couple of weeks ago, and this year they had 692 applications filed that night. Last year we had 574, so there are over 100 more this year. So far they've accepted 553 students. Last year was only 519. So the numbers are growing. It's interesting, there's been a lot of stuff on Facebook about skilled trades, and it's interesting to think about. They're predicting that by 2028, there'll be 3 million job vacancies in skills trades in the country. So there's a lot of, nearly half of all electricians are projected to retire in the next 10 years, and there's nobody to take their place. I guess you could say that's shocking. Hey, you get what you pay for. The other thing that's kind of neat, we're starting, we're working on with the apprenticeship program, which is really a model for the state. One of the problems we've had with students getting into the apprenticeship programs, they didn't have transportation to get to their jobs. So we've got to deal with AAA to provide driver's ed training for students that need the, to pick up the driver's license. And what they're going to do is allow the students to do the classroom portion online, and then obviously they can't do the driving portion online. So what they've decided to do, that if there's a student that needs to get his driving portion, if he wants to get it before school, they'll pick him up at his house and drop him off at school to start the day. Or if he's going to do it after school, they'll pick him up at school and drop him off at home. So the students then can get their driver's license, then get involved in the apprenticeship program and start to gain some experience. So lots of things going on at the Career Center.
Sounds great. Okay, I have nothing on hearing from the public, so moving along. Treasurer's report. Mr. Hiddle.
Good evening. You all had the monthly financial reports. Did you have any questions about? Oh, sorry, I skipped my, skipped my big to-do. My bad. I was trying to finish up what Mr. Height was saying in minutes. Good news tonight is that the Board of Education was able to refinance the bonds on our new primary buildings, and we did that on June 30th. And we actually hit a dip in rates due to the coronavirus. And so as much as that is a problem throughout the world, it actually is helpful for what we were trying to accomplish, which is to lower the interest rates on our bonds. So by doing that, we were actually able to refinance bonds all the way out till 2040, which is 20 years from now. And that bond, for example, was refinanced at 3.02%. If you think about a home loan right now at 30 years, or even if you did a 15-year, you're still in the 3, 3 1/4 to 4% range. So we did a good job there, hit it at the right time, and we saved the district $1,376,578.53. So, good news is that we saved that in total. Bad news is that it spread out over 20 years, so it's not like instantaneously you're going to see this massive reduction in tax bills. But overall, for the community, we saved nearly $1.4 million doing that. So happy to be able to do that and have the opportunity. Any questions about that? All right, and then you have the usual monthly financial reports. We are still on target with where I expect to be at this point in the year. Was there any questions? I'm pretty simple tonight. That was it. That's all I have.
Looks like the figures hadn't changed too much, so we're good.
Still right on track, so that's all I got.
What about the ASBO?
I'd take that off. Twain's. We're going to do that later.
Okay, Treasurer's agenda, we've got that.
Just need a motion to approve.
Okay, motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, passes. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. This month we are going to be pleased to welcome Ms. Troglan, Principal of Washington School, to come forward with some of her most liked staff and students. I'm anxious to see what she's going to share. Some great crowd here tonight, so Ms. Troglan?
So this year, as you guys know, all the schools have been focusing on success bounds. So part of that being that we want students to be successful in school, and we want them to be successful members of society after they leave school. A lot of research has gone into saying that what makes students feel important, what makes them motivated to come to school or want to be at school, is relationships with adults. So we are doing that through our clubs. So the teachers have interests outside of school that they enjoy doing, so they started a club based on their own interest. And then the students will pick clubs that they too are interested in, so there's immediately a connection between them. And through those clubs, we're teaching them the readiness skills like collaboration and respect and responsibility in that relationship with that teacher. So I do have a couple of students and some staff here that are going to just briefly talk about their clubs. We have many more, but we just sampled it here.
So our first one up would be Mrs. Peoples.
Hi, Mrs. Peoples. Nice to meet you. My club is books, create, and play. What we do is I read a book that I can then put into a game, and then we create either a plan or we color a picture. So for example, this one was fort building. And it talks about fort building and all the things you can do with forts. And then I have the kids design their forts, and then we took all their plans, and we tried to put it together, and we built our forts, and that should be in the next picture. And so with kindergarten and first grade, it's kind of hard to take their blueprints and make their forts, but they did their best. This was by far probably their favorite. I get kicked out during kindergarten, so we have to use the commons, which actually worked the best because I had all the tables. And so we had tunnels, we had houses. Can't really, I don't have a picture of it, but one girl made a shower. She took one of our sticks, hooked it in, she put it on a mat, and she was in there. She said she was showering, and so that was just one example. Last week's was, it was called Move. And they first had to draw a picture of their favorite movement, movement activity. It could be anything to do with movement, and then I gave them a whole bunch of equipment. And then they had to make their own movement activity, and they were junior PE teachers. And so they got to be a PE teacher for a day, and they really liked that. So I take books, they make plans, they draw or color, and then we put what they designed into action. And so that's my club.
And next up we have the Army Club with Mrs. Peoples.
I'm Mrs. Coon, and I do the Army Leadership Club, and I teach the Army values, or leadership through the Army values. So the Army values are up there. We go over loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. I talk the kids through each one of those and what it means. On the first day, I usually bring my uniform, go through what each thing on my uniform symbolizes what it means. Other things that we do, if you want to go to the next slide. I think I have another slide in there. Bring in, I brought in a box of MREs for them last semester, and I have some for this semester too, and I broke those open. We talked about them. We go over, I have some compasses that I brought in. We talked about land navigation and leadership associated with that. I've taught them simple drill and ceremony, standing in formation, being a leader, and they have to report to me every Tuesday, club day, they have to report to me who's missing from their squad and if everyone's present or not. They really enjoy that. We also join sometimes with the fitness club, and I tell them that a lot of the, being in the military is being physically fit. And being a leader, you have to be a role model and maintain your physical fitness. So we join with them, and we did a physical Army-style PT session, going in cadence, and taught them a little bit about being in the military as well. And then here, this was last semester, we got shirts that were sponsored from the Army Marketing and Recruiting. They gave me shirts for all of my club members for this semester and for last semester. So every Tuesday, they're supposed to wear their club shirts, just like we wear our, the teachers wear our club shirts, so that we can all be uniform.
Next up we have the Poetry Club with Mrs. Smith.
I'm Mrs. Smith, and I'm really here to talk to you a little bit about how we try to build relationships with our clubs. My first semester club was poetry, reading, and writing. Here's one of the poems that my student wrote. Surprise, surprise, nobody signed up for it. And I think it was because when they have opportunities like social ice cream club and Disneyland club and lawn games, nobody wanted to choose the academic one. That sounded like more work than fun. So I, a goal for my students, which was, one was writing poetry, but the other goal was to find a poem that they really loved and then practice it for 12 weeks, and at the end of that 12 weeks, present it to another class. I ended up with seven kids. Three of them were in my homeroom, so they kind of knew me. We already had built our relationships, and they knew that they were going to have fun. But the other four weren't quite so sure when they first came. I had one little boy in particular who was very shy, embarrassed easily. He giggled a lot. He chose a poem that was really perfect for self-expression. It was about a monster that lived under a little boy's bed, and he was afraid at night. And you could just really act it out and be overly exaggerated and have a good time with it. But I could not get him to read slowly. I couldn't get him to do expression. He giggled a lot. He was embarrassed. Sped through it every time, and we worked on it for 12 weeks. He was the only boy, and all the girls always tried to help him, get him involved. So we ended up going to Mrs. Davis's class to read at the end of that 12 weeks. And he was still hesitant, still shy, giggled a lot, had to coerce him up onto the stage. He got up there and did a fantastic job. He slowed down. He tried to put expression into it. He just felt really good about himself, and everybody gave him kudos. He asked if he could go read it to his second-grade teacher, so I thought that was really a good job. And that's how I built relationships with him. Oh, I forgot to say that. I always got up on stage and tried to show him, but through modeling, and was really crazy about it and acted out and had fun with it. And so that's how we tried to build relationships. So then how has that helped me and him and the rest of us at Washington? So when I see him in the hallway, he probably would have been, a student thought I would have said, "Hey, stop giggling," or "Pax, you know, quiet." But now he's like, "Okay, quiet." He comes up, he gives me hugs at lunchtime. I've continued to talk to him at the lunchroom table, and through him, I've been able to build relationships with the rest of the guys at the table. And when it's a little loud in there, I say, "Hey, guys, take it down a notch." I think that because of that relationship, they're like, "Okay," you know, they get it. It's a lot easier for all of us really to understand each other and have control. So I ended up with seven kids in that club. He's not pictured there. He was absent on that day. But of those seven that were in it, five of them wanted to be in my second club, which now is something different. I tried to make it a little bit more fun, and we're doing how-to-draw videos. He is in my second club. He signed up to be in it. This time he brought a guy friend with him, so they can hang out and draw, and we can continue building that relationship, so.
This was another poem that somebody had.
Yeah, that is like they did I am poems or by.
Next up we have the Pet Club with Mrs. Doak.
Good evening. I have Pet Club, and I'm kindergarten. And so we learn about a different pet every single week. And I ask the kids what pets they want to learn about, so it's student-led. And we dive in and we learn about those animals. Here the students are pictured. We learned about what a vet does and how the importance of taking our animals to the vet. And then they got to be vets, and they loved that. Like that dramatic play was so fun for them. Go to the next slide. I'm here. We learned about cats just last week, and they made cat masks. And it was interesting because Vincent, the little boy, he said, "Mrs. Doak, will you ever make a mask?" And I thought, "Oh, that's interesting. That's what we're going to do today." But, so they all got to become cats, and they love it. What I love about club personally is that I only work with the three kindergarten title classrooms. And so it allows myself as a teacher to immerse myself with all of kindergarten essentially. And so kids that were in classroom teachers that I don't actually see really other than the hallway, I'm able to build relationships with those kids and get to know them on a personal level. So I really enjoy club day. Thank you.
Next up is art around the world with Mrs. Reed.
I'm Jessica Reed. I teach art at Washington, and my club is the Global Art Club. So we visit a different country every time. We have a passport book that we stamp, and we kind of explore the culture of that country or place by the art there. So the art is very much a part of what they eat and the religion and the different things about that country that make it interesting. So I like club because what I do isn't a lot different than what I do daily. I teach art normally. But it's kind of interesting because the kids that I have are interested in art, so it's almost more like an independent study where I can kind of work more with those kids and do things with them that maybe I couldn't do with a class of 25. I have a smaller group, so we can do different kinds of things and learn about different processes and things that we wouldn't normally do, so.
And our last club for tonight is the Violin Club with Mrs. Kaye Smith.
Okay, I'm Mrs. Krauskopf Smith. My interest obviously is playing the violin and viola. I started with the normal club day back at the beginning of the year, and I had nine kindergartners. And we worked on focus and concentration for an hour, which is, if you know kindergartners, it's very difficult. So we, our goal for last semester was to be able to perform a concert for our parents in December, which we did. And Lydia here is going to model a couple of songs that we did in December in just a few minutes. Thinking beyond the semester, I knew I would be getting new students for the second semester, but I wanted to continue my relationship with the students I had. So I decided, I'll back up too. I also knew that practicing one time a week for one hour was not going to get us concert-ready by December. So I decided to have, get everybody together in the mornings. The students, when they come off the bus, I just pull them over, and we would have practices most days through the week. And what we did for the first semester was practice on the stage in front of the breakfast club kid, or breakfast kids, the kids eating breakfast. Through that, I had several kids coming up to me and saying, "When can I be in violin club? When can I be in violin club?" So I decided for the second semester that I would start a morning violin club in addition to the daily, the weekly one that we do now. And I would include kindergarten. And I would include kindergarten and first grade to start with. I opened it up to all kindergarten and first grade students. And thinking I might have maybe 10 kids sign up, I ended up with 33. So we meet in my classroom three days a week for an hour before school starts. And we are learning, like I said, we're learning focus and concentration right now. We're learning how to pay attention. I think she's doing a great job right now. And, uh, obviously we're learning our musical skills, how to hold the violin and how to play it correctly, so. The first song we're going to do for you tonight is the very first song my kindergarteners and first graders learn to play. So we're going to do Pop Goes the Weasel, okay? So first of all, let's start in rest position. There you go. Okay, let's show them Statue of Liberty. In play position. Okay, and I forgot, we don't need the bow for this quest, for this song. Okay. Are you ready? Okay, look at me. Uh, if I can get it started right, there we go. And then the next one is, oop, other hand. Twinkle, twinkle, little star, ready? Play position. There you go. Ready? Ready? There we go. Cut. Now you can start. One, two, ready, go. Obviously, we haven't learned placing the fingers down yet, but that's coming very soon, so. Thank you, Lydia.
And Kendra, she's five, right?
She's five years old.
Wow.
And I do have a couple students who are in clubs in our buildings that look like to Tom. Um, I have, um, Morgan Osborne, who wants to come up and talk about her club? You want to go?
My name is Morgan. I'm, I'm in the first grade. I love Club Day. First I was in the art club. We made art from around the world. Now I am in music club. The music club. We make instruments. I made this one the music. And, um, this one in the art club.
Thank you. We have Madeline Reed, who's going to talk to us about.
My name is Madeline Reed. I am in first grade at Washington Primary. I am in Mind Up Club, Club. We learn about the brain and how to think before we act. I know the different parts of the brain. Like the amygdala, the frontal cortex, and hippocampus.
So as you can see, they're building relationships and they're teaching them great skills and the kids love that day. They love coming. The teachers enjoy having the kids and sharing their common interests. I just think it's a great thing all the way around.
Tracy, how long have the clubs been going?
Since, since the beginning of the year. So they did, they do two sessions, so we did like a half-year and then we started over and do another half.
Now, I know, Lori, you kind of alluded to, but this is for all of you that work with the students. Are you seeing that that's kind of pulling some of those students that might have been very remote and kind of on their own? Is it kind of bringing them in and are you seeing them, I don't know, that spark happen a little bit, that maybe they're enjoying things more? Go ahead.
They ask every, like, yeah. Morgan gets mad if it's not Club Day. Even some of the kids in our classes, they ask, like, "Today's Tuesday is a Club Day" and sometimes it's not. They, they, they get disappointed because they, they do love it. Some of the kids that I've had in art for years were in my club and now I feel such a stronger connection to them, even just having them for a longer period of time in a smaller group, it just makes it, you know, even repeat years don't do that.
The groups are 10 or less kids, so it makes it very more personal.
I bet that, I bet that really makes those, those students feel like they're, you know, they really can shine in that group. That's neat. That's great.
And a small group makes a big difference.
And it's nice too, because the students can build relationships with one another on a smaller level. Kids that they may not have ever talked to before because the classes, there is six classes, um, you know. And so that gives them a chance to interact with one another, get to know each other on the same.
Kendra, you, you've got 33 violin players. Where did you find the viol-, the, the, the small violins for, for all the kids?
Uh, actually, I was awarded two grants, one from the Pickle Education Foundation and one from the Pickle Community Foundation. That purchased, uh, 15 of the instruments. The rest have come from my own personal private studio and from Gateway Arts Council, which is where I have my studio. So they're on loan from them.
So, these clubs are incorporated into this morning?
Yes.
So every child participates in one?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And they're given options or?
So yes, every grade level. Um, so if you have, you know, the six classroom teachers, you have the special ed teacher and the title teacher, and then the art teacher, the gym teacher, the music teacher, the guidance counselor. So they each pick one and then the kids just pick based on the 13 or 14 selections that they have at that time. And so there's a pretty vast, I mean, amount of things that they can pick from. So sometimes if they don't get their first choice, they might have to go to like their second choice, but then maybe the next half, the next semester, they could get their first choice, so, yep.
And you'll continue?
Yes.
Next year?
Yes.
That's great.
You presented your school very well.
Yeah, they did. It was awesome.
Hey, I want to ask you, if there was no day on that Tuesday, would you rather have a snow day or go to your, uh, go to your group?
Club.
Club Day. Yeah, yeah, that's good. I mean, that's neat. That is nice, so.
There's no wrong there.
Awesome, yeah. Well, thank you. Yeah, and any of you that came for that, you're welcome to stay for the board meeting, but you're also welcome to go. It's, I think the entertainment's over for now.
Spring Creek has the same setup. They have different clubs, they have a different Club Day, so you would see something similar over there, like, the two buildings work together, so all students in K through three get that same opportunity, so. A lot of work on their part. Very good job, Ms. Troglin, of sharing that, that information. Next, um, I would like to talk a little bit about the calendar. We, um, did meet and approve the calendar because I needed to get it out to a lot of agencies throughout the city that depends on knowing that information. But, uh, we didn't have a chance to talk about it publicly, so just a few notes on that. Um, we are working toward a Labor Day to Memorial Day calendar. That shaves off about eight days from the beginning. Usually we would start that last week of August. We did not, however, lose any instruction time because we were going to add 10 minutes onto the school day. Um, the calendar kind of came about because we switched from days to hours, which is what the Ohio State Department of Education requires us to do. So switching over to hours, we were already well over the hours that were required by the state. Um, doing this just shifted time and put it into a different kind of a format for us. So still, uh, Christmas break, um, still a spring break. We didn't lose those options. And again, no, no instructional time, no teacher time, what was lost in this. Um, so we do have that on our website. It's out there for everybody to see. Um, they could just go to the Pickle, um, www.pickle.org. There's a link on there that says calendar and they can see this year's calendar as well as the next calendar, um, coming up. So we've talked about it quite a bit, but are there any questions from the board on the calendar? I, I've received a lot of really good feedback. Somebody actually posted it on one of the Pickle, um, Facebook pages and it, again, received a lot of, um, great feedback, so I've yet to hear somebody really, you know, come out against it, so. The only other thing I have is the musical is coming up and, um, the High School Musical. I, I've said before, they don't disappoint. Um, it's going to be a really good musical this year in Tarzan, so, um, tickets are available. You can go to the Pickle High School and buy them in the office there. Or we have our new online ticketing, um, system where you can order them anywhere you want. They are reserved seat, which is a great feature that we have now. People don't have to go out there and wait in line and try to get the seats that they hope to get and try to find ways to sit around, um, other people. So they can go to, again, our website, on the top right-hand side, it says online ticketing. They click on that little blue link and it'll allow them to pick whatever seat they want and, and, and order those, those tickets. March the 11th and 12th, um, that, those shows are at 7:00 PM and then Friday and Saturday, the 13th and 14th are at 8:00 PM. So I'm just encouraging the public to go out and support the arts of high school. And that's it, that's all I have for my report.
Okay. So the superintendent's agenda?
So I'd like to approve the list of donations. We have some donations to the marching band and our athletics program. Um, our sixth grade Olympics program is coming up, so a number of people, Unity National Bank, PoliSource, Hartzell's, Dick Lumpkin Autobody, and, um, uh, those are the only people that, but they donated for the, um, sixth grade Olympics. That'll be coming up. The, um, Red and Blue Association, that's the, um, athletic group. We worked together with them to sell T-shirts in the fall and split that money and half that money now is coming over to our new organization this year, the Alumni Nation. And those are startup funds for that, which will help us with our first event, um, this April, which will be honoring our alumni with distinction. So those donations came through. Lunguard donated, um, $50,000 to our renovation that we are doing in the, um, Hartzell Center for Performing Arts at the high school. And we're going to use this money to help install some handicapped seating, which has been much needed in, in that area. So, uh, we're going to be able to provide some seating for wheelchairs in the front section as well as in the back. And that's going to be sponsored by the Lunguard Foundation, who also helped us renovate our stage last year, so we're very thankful for that. Miami County Solid Waste District donated money to each of the schools for some recycling programs, so we want to accept those. Would like to recommend the board approve the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal from the inventory from Pickle City Schools. Um, it's important to note that we always go through there and take everything that we can and salvage it. And, um, I think sometimes our technology department can be pack rats, um, but they do save important things. And that allows them to repair and, and fix computers again at, at a, at a good cost savings to us because they've always got a good inventory of parts. And the rest of it that's not salvageable, of course, will be, um, discarded, I believe. That's it.
Okay. So the superintendent's agenda vote? Do I have motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Well, all approval. All who approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nay, anybody? Okay. So that passes. Thank you, sir. Okay, personnel agenda, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you. We have several things on there this, this evening. One of the ones I want to point out are, we have a few resignations, uh, as well as retirements on there. Um, I want to thank all those people, Cindy Leeann, John, Ann Howard, Angie Bisek, or all of those folks for their commitment to our kids. Um, and particularly Diane Fox, you can see on there, is retiring after many, many years of incredible service. Um, the good news is, you'll see later in the agenda, that she's requesting a rehire, so. But with that, it, we're jumping into hiring season, if you will, for, for education. And we start job fairs next week, I think is my first one, and they'll run all the way through the end of April. So that's kind of the exciting portion of it, is, is the selection process for new, new teaching staff members. So we'll start that process. And then, I always like to mention substitute teachers because people think that when teaching staff members are sick, that the subs aren't sick either, but they're sick too sometimes, so we always need to replenish that pool. And we just hired two, um, Pickle grads that were not completely, hadn't figured out what they're going to do just yet. And they're both subbing for us successfully. And I called one of them the other day and she's just like, out of this world, happy about what she's doing as substitute teaching. And I think we might, we might, um, get some new opportunities for teachers out of that. So encouraging people to come out and, and if you have a bachelor's degree, we can, we can let you be a substitute teacher in the district. And that helps us out and helps them out too in their career paths. So, and anybody just has to reach out and then, um, I'll take care of the process for them, so. That's it for me.
Tony, um, where do you have your job fairs at?
It depends, so.
Colleges?
Yes, so typically colleges. Um, the Dayton area ESC does a big one, um, in Van Delle at the SAC for us. And we're able to go there and then we get to see kind of all the people that are currently working. When we go to colleges, we, we find the young folks who are just finishing up. So we go to BG, sometimes Ohio State, UD, I added Kent this year, um, Urbana, Wright State, so, um, and then we try to hit them based on the results that we get. If we're getting a, a good group of young people coming out and willing to come to us, then we make sure that we're there year in, year out. Any other questions?
Questions are here, okay. Okay, well, um, approval of the personnel agenda?
So move.
Okay, second? Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Passes. Okay, old business. I don't have anything for old business.
Just to recommend the board approval of the second read and the final approval for the revisions of Board Policy 6325, procurement and federal grants and funds, minor changes. And again, you've already had a reading on that, so this would just approve that tonight.
Okay, so we need to approve, correct?
Yep.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, so we have those. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business? Uh, there is no new business. You know, if I may, one thing I wanted to, uh, to just mention is that I wanted to thank the board members. I know that not everybody could attend, but we went to a, uh, Ohio School Boards Association, um, session, uh, a few days ago. It was last, what was it, last, or last Tuesday, I guess. So just wanted you to know that the board's trying to keep up on all the new things. We're trying to learn what we can and improve as best we can and, uh, stay current with issues and on top of things. So thank you. Okay. Moving along, I don't have anything hearing, uh, non-agenda from the public. So I guess we're at that point where the next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, March 26th, 2020, at 6:00 PM here at the Board of Education Office. Uh, future meetings, June 25th. So that we've set that one, right?
You need to announce that, yep.
Yep, we've set that. The June 25th meeting will...
Go ahead and read that through and announce it.
Okay. The hearing, um, hearing of the public for the rehire of Diane Fox, um, at 5:30 PM. Regular meeting to follow at 6:00. So that'll be for Diane. So.
Tony, I have another question about the, uh, supplemental contracts.
Uh.
This is, uh, are the junior high track and fitness, what's that mean?
So they're sharing.
Okay.
We do that a lot of times, especially in junior high sports. Yep. Good question.
I guess we're at the point for adjournment. Okay. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Okay. So all in favor? So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.